Our next item is a timed item. Jerry McLeese has requested to come before the board, have some questions on our landfill operation. Welcome, Jerry. Come on up to the chair here.
Okay, so do I go up and...
I'm gonna have her ask some questions.
Oh, okay. Come on up. We listed a question that you brought forward. Just to... We want to keep it to the half hour. We have another timed item at 10:30. The other thing is, is we're going to keep it directed at the landfill operations. So if we get very enough to decide from that, probably, I'll probably pull this back in.
Commissioner, I'd like you to come up and sit there. Would you mind if I could just address all of these things?
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right.
Are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay. My first question is, if the county has done feasibility study or comparison with the county versus general contractor running the Goose Lake landfill and surrounding transfer stations, we would like a copy. If this was in fact done, why was there no public input or input from MBGE Incorporated who presently runs the landfill? If there was no feasibility study for comparison done, then we would like to see a copy of the budget that you have in place to be able to operate this landfill.
Okay. So Kevin, you wanna... It'd be appropriate for you to take the lead on answering all this.
I'm just trying to find the list of the questions here. So the feasibility study that was done in 2005 is still relevant today based on solid waste specific because of the population density in this county. This is the document that was paid for. The county did a study back then to evaluate a lot of different things. The cost evaluations for remote and rural communities, recycling plan necessary for communities over 4,000, which this one does not fit at this time. Part of this was to evaluate the need for accounting costs in rural transfer stations once collection services were available to the public. And this report also included a waste stream generation forecast.
I can't start the hearing.
Sorry.
Sorry. There we go.
So I'll start over. This report labeled a lot of different things. It was at a cost of somewhere around $20,000 that was put into studying this in 2005.
Can I ask who did that study?
URS from Portland, Oregon.
URS?
It documented several things. I guess I'll repeat myself here just in case somebody didn't hear. Recycling program necessary for this county in the event that the Lakeview community or any community achieves a population density of greater than 4,000. It developed, or is talking about developing orderly and efficient arrangements for public facilities, cost evaluation for remote and rural communities. And it also included a waste stream generation forecast, which actually is very accurate to the tons that we've collected over the last couple of years.
The last few years, though, we've had quite a bit of different construction. So the amount of waste that went in that landfill has increased every time we've had any kind of big project going on, such as Ruby Pipeline. And what was it over the years before that? The tonnage that's been hauled in that landfill?
Well, your request last night, we got to 2012 this morning collecting it.
So what was the... Can you tell me those costs? The amount of trash and the amount of the dollar amount that's been hauled into the landfill since 2012 each year?
When you say dollar amount, you mean the revenue generated?
What the contractor, seventy dollars a ton.
Well, I mean, yeah, we can do the math. In 2012, it was just under 5,000. 2013 was 5,700. 2014 was 5,500. 2015 was 5,700. 2016 was 6,300. And 2017 was 6,200.
It's because of the construction that's been going on. But basically, this bid in 1998 was based, or 99, was based on 5,000 tons of trash going in that landfill per year. And that's what the contractors had to go off of because the only money made by the contractor is what he collects when they pull across that scale up there. So that's basically at 5,000 at a $70 a ton. That's $350,000 a year is what that landfill takes in at $70 a ton. Right?
If there's only 5,000, 10 goes into it, yeah.
Yeah, so it gets a bonus year. Two years out of, two years out of 20 years, he's gotten a couple of good 6,000-plus tons going in that landfill. Last year was one, did you quote, 6,500 went in there last year?
Um, in 2017, it was 6,200.
How much? 62? So that was $457,000 he collected for running landfill. So he had a bonus year in 17. But I got a copy of your landfill salary projection. It's $309,000 a year. Is that right? I got a copy if you need one.
Do you want me to go in the order of your asking the questions or...
Well, I'm just curious.
I'm just here for capacity to ask the questions, so...
Those... So number nine on your list was the salaries. That's what you're asking now, Gary?
I'm asking, yeah, why haven't you justified $309,000 to the cost of county for salaries for 4.2 people?
Those employee costs that you're looking at for the landfill are estimated at the highest, most budgeting estimates in order to ensure the revenue.
But you base this on a budget comparison, in fact. You based it on the study that was done in 2005.
And the tonnage that we've received in the last trend coming up, last eight to year zero now.
The budget is based on revenue sources, 6,000 tons.
Well, the feasibility study was done in '05.
Right.
And you're basing 2018 on '05?
No. You asked about the tons. These are the tons that you requested, so...
Right.
So when we budgeted it, we used 6,000, looking at the last eight to year zero, where we are now, where we currently are now. So 5,700, 5,800, 6,300, 6,200.
So we based the salary assumptions on 6,000 tons.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And the salary is 309,000 in the budget. That is correct. That budget also incorporates the other landfill operations that the current contract didn't have in there, i.e. the cost of a landfill manager and all the big...
But why is that necessary out of curiosity? I mean, the landfill right now is being run theoretically by two people. I mean, at considerably less expense than 309,000.
The contractor runs it that way. The county's obligation for monitoring of it and for having a landfill manager is not within that contract. Within our budget, it incorporates all those costs in together because those are actually the cause of operating the landfill. This is a 20-year-old lease agreement or a contract agreement that now is 20 years old. We're at the year 2018 now. And so even if there was, we wouldn't decide to go out for our people, it wouldn't even look like the contract that was as of today. Because of the 20 years, things have changed. Compliance has changed. The cost of new business has changed. We now have new landfills.
But in addition to this, I mean, in addition to this, you also have the purchase of equipment, correct?
Absolutely.
The equipment that's out there now, correct, is not identified by the county.
Correct.
Do we want to move on to questions?
Yes, let's get through the questions. We don't have a whole lot of time before next time. So next, is there anything on question one that I'm sure not everybody's happy with answers? All right, number two.
This is actually a little...
I can check that.
Number two. It's been more than two weeks. But has anything, let's see, is there a reason why the general contractor was only notified two weeks ago and obviously looked past that? And by the way, nothing has been received in writing that their contract was ending in the county is taking the landfill back over.
I'm just gonna make a quick statement. Kevin has been in constant contact as late as yesterday with Mitchell, who is the prime contractor and has been for this contract. So Kevin gave an update earlier on an extension that's gonna be, we're going into with Mitchell. We'll take action tomorrow.
I can't hear you, but it isn't really necessary for me.
I say, we'll be taking...
Are you getting this?
We'll be taking action tomorrow on an extension with Mitchell, but Kevin has had extensive conversations. And while in anything we do, we can't speak for someone else, but he has been very clear that he's supportive and very much working with us on this transition, the person who we contracted with, so.
The next question is, how do you plan on facilitating the surrounding transfer stations? Will you be putting them up if they're maintained than yourselves? If you're going to maintain them yourselves, what equipment will you be purchasing at what cost?
I'll look. Go ahead, Kevin.
The transfer station for Christmas Valley, we are going to have a backhoe in place there similar to the operations that take place there now. We have some improvements. We have some improvements planned there for a collection site of paint and electronic devices.
So then you guys are going to maintain the...
Paisley's gonna be maintained the same way. Silver Lake and Fort Rock are gonna be maintained with an employee that is there during those operational hours, which is on Sundays between the hours of 9:00 and 3:00, and transfer that material with a dump trailer back to Christmas Valley.
Okay. Roll-off trailer, is the county purchasing that? Are you going to hire someone to do that that owns what it takes? Are you buying new equipment? Are you using the same 50-yard bins that are up there? I mean, that's what my question is, is the county gonna purchase the equipment to do that? Or are you gonna contract it out to someone?
We are entertaining contracting specifically the transfer of material, of solid waste from those two of...
Solid waste has to be hauled down here.
Yeah, I understand that, Gary. The transfer specifically of the solid waste from Christmas Valley and Paisley, we are going to entertain with the current contractor after this 90-day extension that we just signed and/or put out for RFQs for that specific function.
Okay. And then how about the smaller ones such as Summer Lake, Silver Lake, Fort Rock, Adele? Those are done with front-load bins. They're not done with 50-yard bins.
Yeah, I know.
So are you purchasing that or are you letting that out to bed?
Fort Rock and Silver Lake will have hours just like they do now.
Right. I'm not talking about the hours that they're open. I'm talking about...
We will transfer the material...
The county will do that themselves?
We will transfer the material from Fort Rock and Silver Lake to...
Usually landfill.
Christmas Valley.
And put it in the bins that are there now.
Way it and transfer it so we can document more accurately what tons actually comes through those convenience centers.
Well, all that's documented now because when the contractor goes up there and gets them now, they go across that scale and it's recorded that it came out of Christmas Valley or Paisley.
It's also recorded with his route. When his routes picked up, he also transfers the specific material that we're talking about from Silver Lake and Fort Rock. So it's never designated as specifically tons coming from those convenience centers, up to my knowledge since I've been here.
Okay, well, Lakeview Sanitation also dumps in those bins. And that's all Christmas Valley trash that's transferred down.
Well, we're talking about two different things now. You asked me about the transfer.
The contractor dumps, he has partial route up there, right? But his truck does pick up Fort Rock and Silver Lake.
On those routes.
On those routes.
Yeah. So there is no way currently to document specifically the tons that come from Silver Lake and Fort Rock, but there will be the way we're gonna manage it.
So are you gonna put it in a jump scale? Are you gonna haul up the dump trucks and take it up and dump it in the bins?
It's gonna be transferred to Christmas Valley and weighed before it's transferred.
But what kind of vehicle are you transferring? Why, my question?
A dump trailer and a pickup.
A dump trailer and pickup, okay.
Those quantities off the slips that we get that are judged on cubic yards are less than 20 tons in Fort Rock specifically. Fort Rock, we'll talk about, less than 20 tons for the whole year, but that's an estimate. That's only what that fellow sees coming in. It's never been, it's not weighed specifically, so we don't know.
Well, there's quite a few people in Fort Rock and Christmas Valley that have trash service that goes into the dump.
At times, there are five weeks' worth of Fort Rock in one slip book. So at times, there's only three or four people that go to Fort Rock on Sunday.
Right.
On a slip. So if there's other people dumping there that's not getting on a slip, then we don't know that.
But the county is gonna purchase a dump trailer for both sites. And you'll pull it out there the day they're open.
The employee will. The transfer, your other question was the specific transfer from Christmas Valley or Paisley to this landfill. We are gonna entertain that as a contract service.
It'll be let out to bed.
Potentially.
It seems to me that questions four and six are kind of married together there. So how long are you guaranteeing the price of the landfill will remain $70 per ton? The only way the existing contractor made the transfer stations work was to purchase a garbage business where they could service the outlying areas. And then six, it was mentioned that the landfill cannot, if the landfill cannot be maintained for $70 per ton, that the county will propose an increase in property taxes. The problem with this is 70% of Lake County is owned by the federal, state, and county government, which means the remaining 30% will be paying for what the county is trying to do for what a contractor has been doing for $70 a ton for the last 20 years. Can the county put a bond on the property taxes without a vote?
So Kevin, before you start in, I'm glad you put those two together. Thank you.
Well, they're the same thing theoretically.
Kevin's gonna address the fact that this proposal that we have for operating is based on 10 years at the current rate. So to try and answer that, for the projected future of 10 years, $70 a ton. The property taxes are limited. We cannot raise them even if we wanted to raise them. It is illegal. The measures that were passed in the state a number of years ago limit how much we can... The fact that we can't change the assessed rate on a per-thousand basis at $3.07, so no, we are not gonna raise it. We cannot pass a bond measure without a vote of the people.
You'd have to put it in, it'd have to...
Exactly.
You'd totally be petrified.
Like a hospital bond.
A bond.
Okay.
Well, what about raising the dump fee there? Could you do that instead of a bond? I mean, does that...
Diane, anything is possible, but this plan is projected on 10 years at the exact same rate.
That's definitely...
So there's no guarantee you're not gonna raise the rate whatsoever?
Well, you can come look me up in Paisley if that happens in the next 10 years, if I guaranteed it. There is no plan to.
But you aren't going to institute a minimum dump fee either, correct? Is it all gonna be, I mean, you know, like, okay, so I take two garbage cans to the dump every week. Is it still gonna be $70 a ton for me? Or is there, you know, are there, is there, at any point, are you planning to institute a minimum transfer fee?
I would say that that is something that could possibly be discussed and brought forward in the future based on the study that was done and everything, that that's potential. It is not part of the plan at this point, but I wouldn't want to sit here and say that there isn't things that could come forward over the next 10 years on a minimal, one garbage bag, a minimal cost. It is not part of the plan today, but I want to be straight honest with everybody that there could be proposals that come forward, apply our board commissioners that are here to have that kind of proposal. They would have to evaluate at a time, look at it, and see if they wanted to do that or not. But as of right now, this board does not have that discussion or are implementing that.
The minimum, can I just add one thing? The minimum that you're concerned with, with two specific bags, is not the same as a minimum based on $70 a ton at a minimum weight. Every county that borders us, for instance, Landmark County has $6 minimum for 160 pounds. Deschutes County has, I think it's $4 for the first 180 pounds, and then it, but it is still in there with $70 a ton.
Three and a half cents a pound.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, when you pull on these scales now, you weigh 20 pounds all the time because they only weigh an increment of 20 pounds.
Twenty-gallon increments.
But the minimum that you're talking about is not for two specific bags or three specific bags. It would, it could be a minimum for an amount of weight, whatever it is, 120 pounds, 160 pounds, but based on $70 a ton.
Well, it used to be done up there by the pickup until the scale was installed. And once the scale was installed, it was...
A pickup on a volume. You looked at the volume, whether it was a full bed or a half a bed or whatever.
Hey, that's how it was based. Even then, transfer station, it's still down to transfer station.
Yeah, and that's in here. So that, that minimum had...
It was $2 a can.
He's basically already, he's saying that has already been, I mean, that's been going on for a long time. The scales actually took that out here specifically.
Still, now site and transfer site still.
I gotta ask to that. So if this doesn't work out the way you're thinking, and you have weight cost overrun, are you pulling that out of the general fund to subsidize what it's costing the county on top of what their, their cost is gonna be?
We have to balance, and if that's the case, yes, we would. And we're subsidizing it already with general fund dollars.
We have...
The test wells.
No, no, no. Everything.
We've been subsidizing lots of...
Between $80,000 and $120,000 has been utilized to subsidize this landfill throughout this whole time period.
And what was that for? The contract never got that.
Right. In order to get contractor putting money towards the county.
All the engineering, all the survey to control where the material is, to report to DEQ, how the landfill is filling.
But you guys knew that in the beginning when you let out the contract in 1999.
However, you're asking me about the specific items. I'll give them to you. The surveying that documents how the landfill gets filled accurately in correspondence and in agreement with our permit, the Lake County landfill, and what will be the Thomas Creek Road landfill, that is, we're the owners of that permit.
Right. I think in the beginning, you, since the beginning of the contract, you're responsible to maintain the road in and out of there.
Well, the road, the road is one other thing. Well monitoring.
Well monitoring, that was brought on by the DEQ because the DEQ's the one that told you that.
Well, it's not, it's not brought on. It's something that comes with doing business in a landfill. We have to monitor the well. There's certain locations that failed in the past that the new one has to keep. There's high arsenic concentrations here, so we had a lot of costs just in this last year. And when I first started in arsenic investigation for the new site to even get it to be permitted, all those costs did not come from the contractor. They came from the general fund.
Don't forget the landfill closure fund.
The stormwater management plan that goes along with this whole deal. There's no ownership currently from the contractor in any of that, and there's...
Well, I think that was in the bid, in the original bid, that the contractor be responsible for the test wells or the monitoring and the water control and all that.
No, it's not. But that's what you're, you're kind of making my case. It's not because it's county ownership. The county is the permittee, so they own that, and that has always been subsidized by the county. Contractor has never made investment in that.
And the new one, if it was out bid, wouldn't he?
Well, there are items.
The contract would be the contract. If we went out, the contract would be the...
It would be in the new contract.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if it was in the new contract, the $70 a ton would go out to the owner about a heartbeat.
Well, your father-in-law sat across the table from me and told me that it would be $80 if he had the opportunity to bid again.
But the same contract that he bid in 99, he would be $80. If you added all this, what we're talking about right here...
It could potentially be more in here, and I feel the seat page right now. It talks about the actual percentage as of this date when this was done of being $30 subsidy on top of the 70 that's charged at the scales. And that is about accurate budget-wise with what the county has historically budgeted to operate all those functions out there.
Bobby, just to get this clear in my own mind, I think we're talking about two different things. The $70 that the contractor gets is separate from the monitoring wells and the additional costs that you're talking about from the county. And that, those separate costs go on to the county no matter what. They have to be done. But I'm assuming you're also saying, you know, it's kind of coming across that you're gonna run it at $70 a ton and be able to incorporate all of that into that $70, and I don't think you can do that. Because there's not enough gross dollars there to do that.
Bobby, that's a great question, and I don't think that we're trying to allude to that at all.
Right, but that's kind of what I'm getting from, you know, what you're saying.
With our current, with our current contributions and rules that we have to follow and the contributions that we put in to make sure we follow those under the current way it goes, that's gonna be ongoing. That's not going to change.
Right.
And all we're talking about on the $70 is the actual...
The collection and the transfer of the garbage from outlying areas.
Yeah.
And operation of the landfill, the same as what the contractor...
The cost of the bumper, $70.
Yeah. You have a copy of the budget. You see the transfer from general fund into that, the amount there, right? Can't remember what it is this year. And do you remember off the top of your head what it is?
$135,000. It includes the amount to support the closure fund.
Yeah.
And that closure fund amount, we don't get to pick what number we put in there. DEQ tells us when we have to have.
That's $23,000 each year.
Yeah.
I want to add on to that. The county pays for the slips that are out there that they write up, tickets, the county pays for those. The county enters those. The county does the quarterly reports with the EQ. All that is paid for through the general fund.
But that was all set up when this was originally built in 1999.
That's not correct.
But that is correct.
So we have to keep going here. We're gonna run over a little bit, so I'm gonna try to keep that at a minimum if we can. But did answer the question, yes, general fund will still be putting dollars in, that's the same as it has for many years. And that's an obligation that is there. It's going to take that. It's all in one budget now instead of it being separated out, so.
Okay, so we skipped five because we incorporated four and six. So the reason 20 years ago the landfill was put out to bid was because the county was operating the landfill and was in serious trouble with the DEQ. There were problems with contaminated water.
Just a second. On that, the county was not operating the landfill. It was under contract. The person that went through the clay layer was named John Severn, and he was the contracted operator that went through the clay layer that started the contaminated plumbing. That one needs to be... That one needs to be mixed. The county was not the operator. We had a contractor that was out there, and that's how that contaminated plume happened. There was a very small clay layer there that went through his head.
But the plume smoked and about choked the neighbor to death from the county burning tires in Christmas Valley.
Well, we're not going to do that now.
No, I'm just asking a question.
Your new permit doesn't allow the burn.
But that's why the county got in trouble, one of the reasons county got in trouble, with the landfill because the county was setting tires on fire and choking the neighbor to death. And the neighbor's the one that kept calling the DEQ, and they finally came down here and said, okay, boys, you're going to do this right now.
Well, well, and, and I know we don't want to chase down a lot of paths, but even current landfill and everything, there's been times you've been fired out those places.
Spontaneous combustion at that landfill.
And people dumping, dumping other things, and there can be fires just at landfills, so your operations have to take that under consideration.
I'll let you finish reading the question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so what has the county done to educate themselves on how to run a landfill and who is M O L O certified?
What does that mean?
Excuse me?
Manager of, uh, manager of landfill operations is what?
I know, I know what it means. I just wanted to see. I have two certifications from SWANA, Solid Waste Association North America, M O L O, which is manager of operations, landfill operations, and transfer station. Two certifications that, I think the M O L O certification is forty or fifty credit course, and the transfer station is thirty.
So you've done this in the last year?
Last two years.
Last two years. So this has been in plan for two years now?
This hasn't been in plan.
Okay.
When, when they hired me, it was indicated to me that I needed to have that training as a facility manager at field of site.
The past superintendent also.
Can I, I guess, can I ask a question? Is there anybody there now that's M O L O certified?
You're asking the wrong person. Gary?
Should we go?
Is there anybody at the landfill right now that's M O L O certified? That was the question.
Yeah, but the-
Who is?
Adair Brown Mitchell Brown. They've been running landfills in California for thirty-seven years.
I believe it's, it's-
Mitches.
Mitches, but neither.
Mitches.
He doesn't have to be on site.
So we don't have to- There was also mention of reducing, taking away services for outlying areas.
So currently, we're going to manage it just as though we are now. Number E.
So that, so those outlying areas will still proceed, they'll still have.
I think that's-
The transfer stations are still going to be there.
There, there has to be, there has to be by ORS, there has to be public solid waste, public availability for solid waste disposal. That could include collection services such as you.
No, I don't think it includes that. That collection service is strictly on the home of it. That collection service is strictly a convenience for people that don't have time to go to a landfill or a transfer site. They have better things to do with their time. That's why people have trash service. It's not, it's not, yeah, it's available, but you're telling me, you're, are you going to force them that they have to have service for me or Lake Resanitation or someone else?
No.
So you have to make it available for some public. John Q. Pollock has got to have a place according to the DEQ laws that he can get rid of his trash.
Correct.
All right. It's not, it's not private service.
Okay, with the transfer station building, we're putting in a landfill that was done so the trash could be hauled out of Lake County, but how does this plan?
So I'd like to talk about that. Over the years, with the contaminated plume that we have there, it's always projected that we'd have to transfer the garbage out or put in a million-dollar liner. Myself and the commissioners worked very hard with DEQ to get a small landfill exemption, which will give us sixty years of dumping in the ground out here without putting a million-dollar liner in, without having to have it transferred out. If we had to have it transferred out, it would cost a lot more than seventy dollars a ton. So at the end of the day, what we all need to look at here is, for our community, we're going to have sixty years of time of dumping here locally. That is huge to our citizens, to our community, to the people that's in business that's running a trash pickup business here. For us to be able to work with DEQ and make that happen here is going to save the taxpayers a lot of money. So what happened is we went to work. We tuck our connections with DEQ. We found a way around half the million-dollar liner or having to transfer it out. The tipping shift, great investment. It's good for safety. It's good for control of the litter and all that stuff. We don't have to transfer out because of the work that's been done. So that's a great question as far as I'm concerned, because I'm very, very proud of where we're going for our community, for the future. There's very few places that they allow you to still dump in the dirt, and we're able to make that happen. So sixty years. If I was Kevin or Gary and the business of picking up trash, I would be thinking, wow, now I'm going to be guaranteed that I'll, I'll keep my costs down to my customers, I'll be able to keep my customer base up and have security for a long time.
I don't think I could add a whole lot more to that other than to simply say that having not worked with DEQ a lot around landfills, about four years I was out there with Joe Gingrich and our landfill manager at the time, and the whole notion of us even considering a, a new landfill, a small landfill exemption, it was unheard of. And the process that has gone, that people have had to go through, and over the last four or five years, Commissioner Winters, that was the only time I was involved in it out there. Commissioner Winters has worked with our past landfill manager as well as the, the current landfill manager, and I totally want to echo and agree with what he's saying. At the end of the day, all we're looking at is what's going to benefit our citizens to the greatest degree to provide service to them at the least cost possible that we can do. This is, this is tremendous to think that we've got sixty years of life. And, and quite honestly, without being an engineer, the fact that we're actually going to cite it where it probably should have been cited to begin with is, is phenomenal, I think.
My biggest concern with this whole thing is I don't want any taxes thrown on me and my property-
We can't.
To subsidize that landfill because this ain't working.
Yeah.
That's my biggest concern. That's the biggest concern.
And we cannot do that. This board can't, future boards can.
As far as taxes, that's out of the question.
Yep.
But the cost, the cost of doing business, we're going to try to keep it, what it hurt for ten years. But the cost of doing business, fuel cost and everything else, at some point in time, we would have to look at the fee potentially, but that's true of any business.
Well, I, I looked a little bit at your fuel cost, and if you have to transfer, if the county has to transfer, what was it, forty, forty thousand gallons or forty thousand dollars?
Four thousand years, what's in the budget.
That's not quite enough to run trucks up and down the road, I tell you that.
Okay. Bobby, did you have a question?
I had a question or a comment. To me, the, the biggest issue is private versus government on the operation of the landfill. You know, the responsibilities of the different parties, the current contract you have, you know, the contractor is held liable for his actions and what happens out there and holds the county harmless. And if that isn't, you know, I mean, you're taking on a huge liability.
I think Kevin would like to talk about that liability that you're mentioning.
The, the liability ultimately ends up on the county. The liability ultimately ends up on, on the county, whether it's our stormwater permit, which we currently are working through violation right now because of deficiencies that need to be corrected that are not in the county's control, but we are liable for it, and we are going to invest in engineering and work to correct it. So that part is not necessarily accurate. The county owns the site, the county owns the permit and the liability that goes along with it regardless of who operates it.
The current contract you have with the, with the person states that they are to maintain and, and do that.
Well, under the, under the laws of the state, unfortunately, if we were to contract, build a new contract and put all of that in there, and there was a violation, we're still responsible.
Well, ultimately, the landowner always is.
Yeah.
But still, the, the, it, it's within the, the document that you have now. Your, your dollar value is probably lacking of the, you know, looking at the whole big picture, but the, the requirement is there within this contract for them to hold the county harmless.
Well, I, I guess, if we look back to the contaminated plume and a contractor going through that clay layer, we're still paying for it even though it was the contractor that had it. Ultimately, we're responsible.
It was the contractor. It wasn't?
John Severn.
Was he using county equipment when he did that?
I, I couldn't-
Because I heard he was using county equipment.
I couldn't tell you for sure, Gary. I think it's immaterial today, but-
Oh, it might be, but I mean, he went through it, but you were quit.
I can't answer that.
No matter. The kind of landfill plan that's-
Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, I'm just curious. We've gotten down into the mud on a lot of really detailed questions, but in the report that was mentioned earlier, was there a, a actual cost estimate for each of the scenarios? The new way of doing business, county operating versus contracting, including all costs?
There, there is estimates in here that recommend that a lot of the rural services that are provided by the county are at a higher expense and level necessary for the population densities, and that the county should take on more operation.
Is that on a summary sheet somewhere where there's budget for this scenario, budget for that scenario?
No, it's not broken apart like that. It's, it's not in a budget form, no.
But isn't that kind of the heart of a lot of these questions? That, that the budget's the actual cost of the new way of doing business, county operating?
It doesn't, it does include, it does include costs and subsidies. A lot of language about subsidies currently on the county's expense to make sure that the cost of it for the public stays at seventy dollars.
Has that report been distributed so people can consider?
Actually, what's interesting about this is shortly after I started, Mr. Sturba's the one that gave me a copy of it. I had to go digging for it in our own records, but he had a copy of it.
Okay, we ran over about fifteen minutes. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Appreciate everybody's time. Follow-up questions with our landfill manager, he takes calls and pop by and see him. Appreciate everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need to come in and visit us.
We're going to our ten-thirty item.
I'm not going to take a break. So I've established I do not ever want to get into the landfill.
You might if you put a solar panel over it.
There are projects.
Yeah.
Actually, it's a big, I was, where I take my garbage is Coffin Buick over in Corales, and there's a big pile down just around that.
I've looked at almost every developer and to look at our landfill that we haven't closed and see about hook solar or that, get that in a contaminated area into a productive.
People might not complain about a solar panel on top of the landfill, just saying.
The problem is that no utility will touch it.
Yeah.
We would track it. There's one on the tailing site now, but early on when we looked at that property, no utility would.
Yeah.
They're just like, stand by.
Their landfills take capture of the natural gas, but ours is not big enough to be effective on that.
Okay, so our ten-thirty item ran a little bit late. Doesn't look like this is Laura, this looks like this is Todd. So you have a proposal-
Lori's working on it, you know, doing all the hard work, so she's trying to-
All right, this is on the so, proposed solar site that's been proved. You're looking at a pilot for the, I guess, taxation on it, so take it away, Todd.
Good morning, Commissioner. So my name's Todd Gregory. I'm with Obsidian Renewables. We are proposing to build a ten-megawatt project on a piece of property just south of the airport. It's a hundred and sixty acre parcel down there. We've got Land use approval to build the project. We plan on building it at the same time or shortly, shortly thereafter when we build the, the airport project out there. So we are going to run the, basically do the work to do the, what's called the generation of intertie line probably this year, and we're going to try to get out there in like November if it's not too wet, and do the line, tringe the line over to the substation where they can act over next to our other projects off of Alphaberto. And then, and then go ahead and build it about this time next year, along with the airports up there. So we are proposing to enter into an agreement with the county to do the payment lieu of tax program that's available for, for solar projects that we've done on some other projects in the county. It's the standard seven thousand dollars per megawatt, so that'd be seventy thousand dollars per year to the county. And we're proposing to do this one for fifteen years versus twenty years that we've done some of the, on some of the others, because when we look at the, the, our estimation, estimation of the value, we, we, about year fourteen, fifteen, it's going to be, I guess, one seven thousand dollars per megawatt actually would be as much or more than full taxation on the project. So we want to do the pilot for fifteen years and then go into regular tax after that. I think this is the same form of agreement that we did on the other projects, so. Are you going to answer any questions that you have and so forth?
There is not, Dave, not for me. Dave Knowles takes care of payment of taxes, follow-up and everything. I know we have reworked some of it, but I just need to make sure before tomorrow that this incorporates all the things that are tax increases or something there.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm at. We just need to chat with Dave and can we have it on tomorrow, so that if we're, if we have to take action then.
And this is property making south of the airport, right?
Yes.
And what is the farm destination, farmland destination of that property?
It's a zone, I'd propose, eight-two, it's marginal grazing and what they're using for. It's not irrigated. I repeat, it's not irrigated.
Does any concerns about other projects that are high value farmland, so we want to make sure we got that.
This is the kind of land where you want to put solar.
Well, this is one through the planning permission.
And you have a question back there?
Yeah, Todd, you just talked earlier about, well, in other conversations about, it's not in law to change a seven thousand dollars quite yet, so is it in law to do something less than twenty years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The way the statute reads is you can do it up to, up to twenty years.
Up to twenty.
So at the discretion of the county or, you know, whatever you want to associate.
Okay.
Bruce?
Yeah, just a, a question. I know the FAA-
Yeah, just a question, I know there are FAA requirements, have they all been met?
Yes, yes, in fact, the FAA, there's so many solar projects at or near airports that the FAA doesn't even require a glare study anymore.
Yeah, I looked into that myself several years ago. Is it right under the approach path and departure route for the runway?
It's, well, I mean, you're familiar with the airport, obviously, so if you know where the, if you know where the drag strip is, it's the hundred and sixty acres, it's catty cornered to the drag strip.
So, that would be off to the southwest of the airport?
Yes, yeah, to the south, yeah, correct, southwest.
Southwest.
Yeah. I think it might actually be.
There it is. Not the best, but-
Yeah, no, yeah, it doesn't get specific enough, but-
The solar project that's proposed for the airport property itself would actually be more prominently adjacent to the airport than what this would be.
Yeah, and we've done all the work with the FAA out there with respect to most things, there's a, we're working through, you know, some of the wildlife issues out there, you know, it's a federal, the FAA is a federal, so it's kind, it's what they call a quasi-federal action out there, even though it's a county-owned airport. So, we're working through some of the wildlife, you know, checking the boxes out there, but-
There's lots of bald eagles out there in the wintertime.
Yeah, and we don't plan on interfering with any of them, so luckily, there's none nesting in there.
Now, they sit on every other telephone pole though, down at the airport.
Yeah, well, I think the airplanes would be more worried about those than the-
I almost hit one.
Than the solar panels, but, yeah.
Okay, so we have this on for action tomorrow, the legal counsel already used it, I believe, or maybe not, if not, Melanie, would you get, make sure legal counsel gets, look at this before tomorrow and make sure-
I know Dave's seen it.
Well, and if Dave hasn't sent it to legal counsel, Dave and legal counsel probably need to communicate rather than just legal counsel.
Yeah, good, check with Dave, I'm it.
Do I need to be here tomorrow?
No, you don't, well, maybe we need to keep economic development, you stay overnight and I need to like you, let's think about that way, let's think.
I always love it on Alexia, in fact, I was making my reservations today that were fair.
I think a more important thing, one facetious is that you visit with Dave, if Dave has any concerns that he's going to share with us, you probably-
Yeah, I've been in contact with Dave over the other big project.
But this specific one?
Oh, if he's around, then you know.
He is.
And you can stay overnight at one of the guest house out of Clutch. Just spread the row.
All right, so it's on for tomorrow.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, Todd, appreciate it. So, our next time item is at ten o'clock, so we have a couple of-
Oh, man, I'm an hour off all day.
Hopefully, our next timed item's at eleven, we have a couple things, Melanie, ODOT agreement number thirty-two eight-five-nine.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, so Melanie, we're up to you.
Okay, so recently, I was awarded a grant for the purchase of a new public transportation bus. I need this done by the end of this month to be effective on the transfer. I sent Jim Bailey and he approved it. We applied for two buses to be replaced, they scored them on a scale of one to five, and the two thousand and six model did not qualify for it at this time, so we will keep that one in service and reapply next year. The purchase, the grant is for sixty-two thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars to be used for a smaller bus, less than twenty-five feet, with six to twelve seats and three E D units.
We're doing it, we're doing it.
Okay, so that's on for tomorrow, those are grant dollars for that specific fund. The other thing you have is in addition to sheriff vehicles, you can now quote-
Before you go there-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just looking at the application and I don't know if we need to make any prescriptions or make changes because it has a device on there, it's getting, it has me on there as the signee, it has my email address as Commissioner Ware, so we need to check into that, make sure-
Good catch, I never read that.
Change of the name and key of the hand challenge for the property. But, quick question for you, on this small bus, area coverage utilization that you're intending for local or-
This is for the Lake County senior citizens.
Based out here, have a senior city here for the geographic area.
I don't determine how they use the bus, I just facilitate their money. They report to me on their activities and I pass that on to ODOT. I unfortunately would like to control how they spend their money sometimes, but-
No, no, we're not to control their money, but to ensure that geographic area is served.
Right, they go, they go to Northlake, they go to Bend, they take people to appointments, wherever they need to go, they just try to schedule them so they work.
Okay, so, your other item is sheriff vehicles.
So, for the sheriff vehicles, this is in a process, as you guys know, we finally got all of the bids in, I sent out the same request to three vendors, I spoke to Mr. Bailey about the response that I did receive from Gresham Ford, they didn't submit bids for Chevy models, he said that's not a problem on how they submit their bid, just as long as we extend the opportunity. The vehicle committee decided that vendor sheriff and his department could decide what best suits their needs at this time, and we would support that. He opted to get a Chevy Silverado and a Chevy Tahoe.
Hell, I remember.
The Tahoe is a little bit more money than the pickup, but that deputy feels it would suit their needs best. These vehicles are also P E V, police pursuit vehicles, so they will be ready to go out there and pursue without any alterations that we've done with that. So, I'll talk a little bit about, so at the vehicle committee, I didn't have names from bidders, I submitted, I gave them the information as vendor one, vendor two, so there wouldn't be any favoritism, and Jeff Hall was, that Hall Motor Company, was the least expensive, and they decided that he would be the best vendor.
So, Sheriff or vendor sheriff wasn't able to make the meeting today, apparently?
Well, I spoke to him this morning about six-ish, I work a lot, I spoke to him this morning, he said he would try to make it to help support me with this, and he said something to keep up with.
Well, one of my questions I've asked you to address was that whenever we've changed over to police interceptor rigs, I understand for wiring and all that, my question was if these are governed for a certain speed, and if they're not governed for a certain speed, are they going to have the tire rating for that higher speed because of that's quite an additional cost?
Come on, you don't need to say that now.
Tires are designed for not over a certain speed for a certain amount of time, and so my number one issue is employee safety, and so if we're purchasing vehicles that are designed, possibly going at a higher rate of speed, they need to be equipped to be able to appropriately also.
I went down to a Schwab on Friday and I had a discussion with them, with them while they were fixing a battery for me, and we discussed the tires, and they went over the different plies that would work, I said, well, one of our concerns is having a ply that goes so many miles per hour and not being able to be versatile in the terrain that they go in up north, and the assistant manager said, I have a good option for you guys that should be about the same price, so he said, I can't quote the ratings, but he said, we'll need an S tire rated for so many miles per hour, he thinks it'll be acceptable.
Thank you, man.
The assistant manager at Lesswab.
I have one other question, not on the technical part, but you mentioned that the Tahoe was a little bit more expensive.
Right.
But it was to meet the deputy's needs for the audience, we need to justify technical expenditure, so what was your rationale, just in terms of, what was the rationale for the Tahoe?
Honestly, I can't answer that. I just take what they tell me they need, and I'm sorry, I don't have a good question or a good answer for your question.
I'm sure there's a good answer.
I'm sure there, I'm sure there is, but that's just what that officer preferred. A lot of agencies let their officers choose if they want a pickup vehicle or an S V and-
Well, Commissioner, that's a very good question, that was one of the requests to have the sheriff's department represented here because it's not a small cost difference, it's seven thousand dollars difference, as you obviously looked at yourself, same as me, and as, there really needs to be justification for the need.
Tax pay.
Do we need it or do we want it?
Maybe tomorrow, Melanie can ask vendor sheriff to have the process.
Yeah, there's a good reason, the public needs to know what the reason is.
And that's not for you to answer, that is for that department to answer, I appreciate you wanting to answer it, but that department is wanting to-
I thought possibly they had complained of the reason, apparently not, so we'll inquire tomorrow.
Yes.
All right.
Very good, Melanie.
Thank you.
I like the way you identified the vendors by number and city name.
I wanted to have my ODOT chain.
Yes, very good.
Melanie, you have nothing else on the agenda?
Um, no.
All right, so it's eleven o'clock, and we have Edmunds' property, Carol, Ms. Edmunds, would you like to come up, please?
Yeah.
And welcome, thanks for sitting through Commissioner's meeting.
Very interesting.
Thank you, Carol.
Good to see you again.
You must be known.
I know, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely, we'll go, skim over this, I think you're probably going to go right through this, but I'm expecting-
Yes, I was told I had four minutes, and so I'm going to read it, so you can follow along. Greetings, Commissioners, Sean Kestner and the Winters. My name is Carol Edmunds, I am not new to the Lake, to Lake County. My father's family came to Paisley in nineteen-ten. I was born in Lakeview, and my husband and I have been Summer Lake property owners since nineteen eighty-six. I am the successor trustee of the Donald R. Edmunds Trust, who owns five hundred and sixty acre parcels of land in Summer Lake, Oregon, known as Edmunds Well Wildlife Sanctuary. My husband Don and I purchased and developed six hundred and forty acres into beautiful wetlands for wildlife and disadvantaged youth. We have been members in good standing in the Summer Lake community for the past thirty-two years. We took dry sandy Alphonsage Bridge desert and carved in impressive wetlands with ponds and riparian areas. The ponds range from two acres to thirty-five acres. We have improved the land, obtained every permit necessary, paid our taxes, and treated all community members with respect. We have spent over a million dollars of our own money on this development over the past thirty-two years. Several agencies have found our project of worth and value. Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Oregon Wetlands, and Oregon Access and Habitat have donated funding for the development. We formed a five oh one C three nonprofit corporation, Edmunds Well Wildlife Sanctuary, that served as a haven, safe haven for wildlife and disadvantaged youth. We donated funds, with donated funds, we were able to construct in a better lodge and activity center. Between spring break for schools and Labor Day, approximately two hundred and thirty youth come to visit and stay at the sanctuary every year. Don Edmunds was a very strong individual, having survived several cancer episodes and septic shock that left him as a bilateral amputee in need of a kidney transplant. Even with those health issues, he continued working on his heaven-on-earth, the sanctuary project. On October seventh, two thousand and seven, Don Edmunds passed away. Since that time, I have managed and overseen the continuation of Edmunds Well Wildlife Sanctuary. This project is now too much for me, as a, for a person my age and health to manage. It is my desire to sell the property. Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, Summer Lake staff have worked together with us for so many years. They seem to be a perfect fit as a purchaser and would keep the land in perpetuity as a wildlife area. Three to four years ago, I asked O D F and W if they would be interested in purchasing the property. They have been, we have been in negotiations and contracts for several years. O D F and W has many steps to follow in land acquisition, and the process has not been as rapid as one would hope. One of their requirements is to have a public meeting to explain the project and answer citizens' questions. Such a meeting was held in Summer Lake on May the fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at the Summer Lake Lodge. A civil and informative meeting with thirty-five to fifty people in attendance was held. At the end of the meeting, attendees, attendees were asked to provide a poll count on sheets of paper whether they were for or against the O D F and W acquisition of the Edmunds property. We were told that the county commissioners were requesting the vote. Did the commissioners request the vote? The votes were collected and given to Commissioner Kestner. The results were told to be twenty-one in favor of the purchase and sixteen against. At ten fifteen P M, May the twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, I received an email from Chaylen Sheffield with an attached Summer Lake voting form. The next series of remarks regard that voting ballot form and comments on Chaylen Sheffield's personal actions. I received my ballot at ten fifteen P M on Monday, five twenty-one eighteen via email. I questioned, how were the property owners of the community member, and community members supposed to return their ballots by five P M, Friday, May the twenty-fifth, which was just four days after they were sent out? Snail Mill could not deliver ballots and had been returned by five twenty-five eighteen. Chaylen responded that local people with post office boxes received their ballot in their P O box. If they had not, then extra ballots were at the Summer Lake store. That did not answer how vacant landowners received their ballots and how they could have returned them in time. The ballot said, instructions said to mail the ballots to the commissioners or send it via email to the commissioners' administrative secretary, Melanie Guzani. I emailed my concern to Melanie Guzani, the administrative secretary to the commissioners, inquiring her role in this voting process being conducted. Her reply to me was, Chaylen is conducting this survey independently of the county. My role is to be an unbiased person to carry the responses. by Jalen was because the commissioners did not want to be vote counters. Therefore, the commissioners voted in favor for Melanie to be the official vote counter. I then inquired how the community members were getting their voter ballots and how they were able to receive them in such a short window of time. I wanted to fully comprehend the mailing process. The following information was communicated to me. Community members received their ballots in one of three ways. One was that some ballots were put in the PO boxes of the voters of the community. A second way was that Jalen Sheffield mailed some of the ballots. A third way was that Jalen Sheffield also hand-delivered some of the ballots. It was also communicated that those ballots in the PO boxes did not have any postage. They were received without an envelope. They were received with the ballot folded up with a sticky on it, folding it together. There was no postage, no stamp, or postmark on any paper regarding the voters' ballots in the PO boxes. It is my understanding that all mail received needs some type of postage. It is my understanding that it is illegal to send mail without postage. I feel it is important piece of information to know, is put those ballots in the PO boxes. And why did those ballots not have postage? It may be necessary to inquire with that, with the postmaster of Lake County. I would like to note that the official ballot box was a cardboard box in the Summer Lake store with a lid on it, with a split in the top. It could have been entered and tampered with at any time by anyone. After hearing about the voters, after hearing about how the voters received their voters' ballots, I wondered, "Is this how a legal voting process is conducted? If this was a legitimate process, why did the commission, commissioners not want, excuse me, why did the commissioners want nothing to do with counting the votes? Did due process and protocol take place throughout this voting process? Was it an unbiased voting process? Why wasn't a county official conducting the distribution of the voters' ballots rather than an individual of the community that may have reasons to obstruct the completion for the purchase of Edmunds' Well Wildlife Sanctuary by a governmental entity? Wasn't this business conducted through a legitimate vote on May 14, 2018? Is the vote that took place one week later a reactionary response to the legitimate vote that was passed in favor of ODF and W purchasing the Edmunds' property? Is it a last-ditch effort to manipulate the civil, fair, and transparent process that had already been done through the Lake County, through the commissioners of Lake County, as well as the community members and ODF and W? Is someone or something attempting to manipulate or obstruct the vote passed on May 14, 2018? Finally, it was communicated to me that the ballots are locked up in a lock box, in a lock box of Melanie Guzani's office. I would like to know, what was the process of validation, verification, and account of this vote? Neither Jalen or the county has notified me. Did legal process take place in the completion vote to determine the result of the vote? With the permission of the commission, with the permission of the commissioners, I would like to request that I may see the voters' ballots from that vote. It has been communicated that certain members of the community are not in favor of ODF and W purchasing the Edmunds' property. It has been communicated that one community member in particular, Jalen Sheffield, called and asked to ODF and W so often about Edmunds' Well Wildlife Sanctuary that they have considered the thought of changing their vote numbers. This is Jalen's right. But, of course, it makes me ask, why is this specific individual so concerned about this issue? Why can't this individual respect the vote that took place on May 14, 2018? Why does the most recent voting process taking place seem to be conducted independently by Jalen Sheffield and not necessarily endorsed by the commissioners? Has this most recent voting process been fair? I would hate to think that this vote is about personal motive and gain on an individual in the community. However, I do know that a certain individual in the community offered to help ODF and W with contacting possible easement holders and convince ODF and W to use an easement to the Edmunds' property that would not pass in front of his personal residence because they wanted to purchase and develop the property across the road from their house. Was that action for their personal gain? This individual has approached my neighbor, but we sold 80 acres to regarding purchasing the 80 acres. So as much as I would hate to think such a thing, I do realize that these voters are a possibility. It would mean a lot to me as a community member of Lake County, my family who came from this county, and my late husband, for you to seriously think and respond to my questions regarding the most recent vote that was regarding the Edmunds' Well Wildlife Sanctuary. I know that Edmunds, I know that all the Edmunds have ever done is attempt to make a positive impact on the Lake County. ODF and W Wildlife Area in Summer Lake has brought thousands and thousands of dollars to the Summer Lake community. They have been an asset to the success and survival of the community. I hope that the commissioners of Lake County will take seriously consideration to that as well. I ask for fairness, transparency, and integrity in the complete process of the potential purchase of the Edmunds' property. It is not easy to find buyers for projects like Edmunds' Well Wildlife Sanctuary. Don and Carol Edmunds have devoted 32 years to make the Summer Lake area a better place for wildlife, kids, and community. Please do not punish us for giving us, for giving our all to create something wonderful. We ask for your support. So then, respectfully submitted, Carol Edmunds.
I'd like to add something. There's references throughout that the county commissioners asked for a vote and so forth. I was the one commissioner that was at that meeting.
Yes, I am.
And I was totally astounded when I was told that Commissioners down asked for a vote. It's not the process that I would myself go down a path on. So when comments are made about commissioners, please acknowledge that I was not part of that vote.
So to go back to the start, Carol, thank you very much. Very nice written letter. The Board of Commissioners was approached by the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. This is not a decision by the Board of Commissioners whether they sell or don't sell. So we didn't reach out, they reached out to us. So that's the way it started. During those meetings, they came to us a couple times, they asked where we stood. Individually, we made our response. I think it's sort of, we're all real close to the same, while everybody speak for their self, is, is that this is between ODF and W and the Edmunds', but I'll speak for me, I'll support what the community of Summer Lake supports. And that's the way it was phrased. They came to us twice, I believe, talked us individually, they being ODF and W. That's where I stand, is, is I believe through the process, whenever this gets to the commission level where the decision will be made by the amount of representation pro or con, they'll make a decision at that level of the support of the community. I don't believe that the decision needs to be based around the Board of Commissioners because this is a private land sale to another government entity. So that's where I'm at. I've made that statement many times. I support what the community supports there. Things have got blown out of proportion a whole lot, have, it's changed over to a vote from a polling to whatever. So as people mention different things, it gets blown out of proportion as it goes down the list of people. Interested in the polling of that meeting? Absolutely, I would be, and it was done there, interested in that. That is something to reflect on, whenever people will be doing their presentation at the commission level. I believe that's in October, whenever that is, okay. Think that changed, it was earlier. So I think there will be representation there that will talk about that. The other that was taken on by an individual, I will have to say, a little disappointed on the way that letter went out. The only thing that was ever mentioned is, yeah, we can, Melanie could count the votes. That was the only thing, there was none there. Polling vote, or whatever you wanted to say, is, the commissioners, that was not a direction of the commissioners to go out and go for a polling or a vote, or go through the mail or any of that. There were some discussions, I believe, probably individual commissioners, but no, that is not, and I let others speak to it, but that was never a decision by the Board of Commissioners to go opt to a vote, was not.
It is the policy of ODF and W to have the favor of the community and the local commissioners for their acquisition projects. And I, they are waiting for a vote, for action, because now there's been two votes, you might say, or polls, one in favor, one against. And, and one was at the meeting, and that was Paul, and then it was the Jalen Sheffield ballot. And so his was more against and for, and so now they're between, but they want to do their acquisitions in the favor of the community and the county. And so that's why this, your support is so important, that you do support this acquisition.
Yeah, and I, however, I back individually, I'll support what comes forward from the community through the process, whenever it goes to the commission, and the commission's gonna have to make that decision on the community's support by the written letters, the documentation things come forward. In my opinion, that's individually, as far as I'm concerned. I guess where I'm at with the Department of Fish and Wildlife is that I'm not in opposition, I'm not in favor, I want the community's support to come forward, either for pro or con. As a commissioner, we get hit on both sides a whole lot. I'm surprised you're the only one here today, to be honest with you. But we get hit individually of people that don't support it, that don't think that government should acquire more land. There's people get very upset about that.
I'm aware of that.
So, so we hear that argument. We hear the argument that people support it very much, it's economic development's good for the community, and exactly what you portray here. So as we said in our position as commissioners, and you have both sides of it coming forward, I'm not saying that I'm deciding my responsibility or anything, but I believe that the commission will be able to make their decision based on the testimony that comes before them. That should be, everybody has an opportunity to testify or put a letter in at that time. And I believe they'll make their decision based on the information that comes forward. That's where I'm at.
Well, I don't know where to start. This thing, Commissioner Winters kind of alluded to it, but it's, from my point of view, Carol, it's blown completely out of proportion to what I'll say is, one commissioner I've alluded to with different entities, including our state fish and wildlife folks who I've known for years and years, who have sat before us and talked about this project. And I said the very same thing when they asked if we would support, provide letter support. And I said the very same words, "I will support what the community supports." I've had people in the community ask me, "Will you provide a letter support in opposition to this?" And I said, "I will support what the community supports." And as you know, in your lifetime and in my lifetime, there are a number of things that come up in a community that you will talk to someone, and they'll be in opposition to something, and they'll say, "Everyone in the community feels that way." We can't operate off of that kind of a statement. So the sense that they were going to get some semblance of a vote, a poll, whatever you want to call it, there was never, and I am aware of, anything intended to be an official vote and an official process. We didn't endorse that. What we endorsed is knowing what the majority of the community felt about this. And how they did it, quite frankly, was up to them. I didn't have time to go up to Summer Lake and do a poll. And the fact that Jalen and some other folks were the ones that ended up putting this together at yes or no, or whatever, we got hit by the state that said, some of the state officials, not at Summer Lake, but within the state that are working on this, "Well, instead of just asking them yes or no, can you ask them to please explain why they feel the way they do?" And I said, "I don't want to have anything to do with this. You know, it's the community's, it's the community's will that will see this through one way or the other, whether the Edmunds' family is able to sell this to the state or not sell it to the state." But I will say, and I just want, because I did pick up on that, after the May 14 meeting, before there was any notification of how the 37 or so folks present actually marked or voted, or said whatever they said, it was brought to my attention that there were those in attendance that didn't live in Summer Lake, didn't own land in Summer Lake, but happened to be there doing bird watching or whatever, and they said that they were voting on, on this. So it wasn't the will of the community from that perspective. And I quite frankly said after, after that meeting, I don't know who was there. I wasn't in attendance, I didn't want to be in...
I mean...
Yeah, you were. When Jalen talked about getting a poll out to everybody, which, you know, there's not hundreds and hundreds of folks in Summer Lake or that have property in Summer Lake, when the numbers came back, it was around 160 people had turned in something, I thought that, in my opinion, that was a fair representation probably of however the vote was, however the polling went, what the numbers were. But quite frankly, it's, like I said, it's so far blown out of proportion as to what the role of the commissioners were, I will say myself, would have played in this or had to do with it. I want to support what the people we represent support. That's all.
I feel that, I had called Melanie and asked her some questions, and I said, "Well, these people, like I said in the letter, that did not, that were not there, were not, they were absentee owners, how were they going to get their ballots? And how were they going to get them back?" And I gave her one name in particular, and she went and looked up that name, and I don't know if she gave it to Jalen or not, but that person did not receive a ballot and had owns 160 acres righties to the wildlife area. So not everybody was included. And this voting process is...
Well, the young fellow who's getting older now that conducted this, or was one of the primary ones I've known since the day it was born, and I guess I can say right now that the easiest thing for me as one commissioner... And I guess I can say right now that the easiest thing for me as one commissioner can suggest is that we, I say we, but I'll just keep it to me. I can say the state commission, not to get commissions and commissioners mixed up. When they meet in October, I would tend, Commissioner Winters kind of alluded to it. There's, even though it's in Klima Falls, you know, there's opportunity for people to send in letters of support or not support. There's an opportunity to go over and testify. And if the commission really values in a big way their decision that they're going to make on this purchase, the proposed purchase of land, that I can say as one commissioner, based upon the input you get from the community, so we remove all of this other stuff, who didn't get a ballot, who did, and all of those types of things. I wasn't there before today, but I am there now to simply say, I will support whatever the will of the people in that community that care to weigh in on how they feel about this.
And that weighing in is not going to be required in these two votes. They'll be by personal representation.
Yeah, and I had a conversation, I think night before last or last right, with an individual that came into my office and they were talking, this is how extreme it's gotten. They were talking about how people are upset because they have to go to Klima Falls and they couldn't hold this special meeting of the commission in Summer Lake. And I said, well, I've never been to one of those commission meetings, but I think they deal with a lot of different issues and they move those meetings around the state. They don't move it to one specific place that I'm aware of for one part of their meeting.
Originally, this meeting was set for Baker.
Exactly.
And they said, no, that's too far. The director said, no, that's too far for the local people to go. And so they, the next place that was Klima Falls. They have these meetings.
Move them around, just like their land use board.
But it's for everything that has to do with wildlife, all over the state.
Yeah. So my point is, is that people, not only do they have adequate time, because this is June and that's not till October, to write a letter to the commission, however they feel about it, but they also have the opportunity to make arrangements to be there in person if they choose to. The role of the commissioners, I wish we had as much power as people perceive we do. I mean, I really don't, but it's kind of shocking that people think that we can dictate whether or not a private landowner can sell their property to someone. I will say something a little bit different than Commissioner Winters, and I really appreciate what you and Don have done, had done prior to his passing and since that time. I think you've done a wonderful, magnificent job there. And I think you have a right to sell your property to any willing buyer. I think that's your property rights and I respect those completely. The issue I have as a former federal employee for 32-plus years and the last 12 as a commissioner, and I told Chip, who was the director out of Central Oregon for the US, for the Oregon Fish and Wildlife.
Chip Dale.
Yeah. When he met with us along with Foz and Marty and so on and so forth, I said, the issue I have with all of our agencies, because we see it with the Land and Water Conservation Fund with the federal government, is we're able to go out through different means and whether, I don't care how their money is set up, if it's through the mitigation fund from Ruby to purchase this, however that happens, but it's not very, there's not much forethought put into the fact that they can't maintain what they currently own. And that's the problem I have with both the state government and the federal government. Do not take, and that's what I told Chip. I said, until you can do all the things that you want to do on the Summer Lake Refuge, I have a problem with you. Not that you can't purchase it, that you don't have a big enough bank account to purchase it, whatever means that bank account was derived from. I have a problem with the fact you don't have any way, unfortunately, to maintain it because you don't have the revenue, the state does not issue you enough money. So you're hearing my personal opinion on that, but that doesn't weigh into whether I support it or not. Whether I support it or not is based upon what the community wants. And it's just that simple. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll add a different twist. If the county commissioners support what the community wants, then that's to duplicate a voice. Mentioned earlier that the commission will consider what the populous local community wants and also what the county commissioners wants. I'm somewhat embarrassed by the voting aspect of, but to mimic that as a commissioner, our job to me is much greater than just saying X hundred people want this. So we have to look at greater things. What populous wants is a big factor, but to me, it's not the only factor in a county commissioner's decision. It's the property rights owner. It's the economy. It's the service to the kids and it's to the wildlife resources overall. So it's more than just community for me and decision making. There's many other factors that goes into there.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. One of the arguments is a little bit different than what you brought forward is the private landowner and people in the, one of our biggest, most important parts in agriculture and livestock in that there's been, many people come forward with concerns of going out of private ownership, going into public ownership, which limits availability of land for operations of livestock. Carol, you mentioned one thing there that I just sort of maybe is an aha moment or maybe it wasn't, whenever you mentioned that the Fish and Wildlife was reflecting on the vote and there's been two different votes. Well, it's a great opportunity for the Department of Fish and Wildlife to step up and do a polling of accuracy that they want, accuracy that you want, of being able to research the landowners, appropriate landowners within that area and send out a polling yourself. Because the Board of Commissioners has said, we'll support what the community supports. It's a great opportunity for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife to step up with what we have said and do their official polling of the appropriate people within an area right there. So I think both polling has their weaknesses and their strengths. But this, I think, after what you said to me, it's sort of like, oh, here's an opportunity for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife to step up to answer the question that they're wanting to know. There's plenty of time between now and October and they could take full advantage of two different pollings and say, we're throwing both of those away. We're going to ask for the official polling that we're going to stand behind and this will be taken into record. Just a thought. So if you're working with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, that's an individual thought that just came to me as we're sitting here visiting, so.
Well, I'll add that being county commissioners, we should also be at the site to request of ODFW to do their own. In other words, if they rely on us, what our decision is, and we say, we're going to go with the vote of the people, if that's what we're saying, then we need to also request of the department to have a quality or credible vote.
Credible.
And always remember, commissioners can do individual letters that represent only their thoughts in support or not support. We can do a letter as a full board that we all sign, or individuals can bring their own letter of support or not support forward. That's within the parameters of being a commissioner.
Yeah, when you've got three commissioners coming, you're going to have one or two that differ from the others. Not always, you know.
Is there anything on there that we didn't? I did mark every one of your questions on there. I do know that you asked about seeing the ballots or whatever you want to call it, the responses. I have no, that's no secret. Do you have those, Melanie? Is that something that you have?
I've kept them, but I don't know if you want to release them to anyone specifically or just to listen to Trevor.
So there's no, are you talking names or are you just talking numbers? But what's being, I don't know.
These ballots do have means. I feel like if I were a person voting, I would have wanted to vote in confidence. I don't know if I want my vote disclosed. I wouldn't let my vote for county commissioner disclose, you know, on the last ballot. I think any, that's just my personal opinion.
I think the substance is not named or saying of this ballot, how credible or not credible it is. If, I think what's asked is just the numbers, yay, numbers.
And I'd release the numbers. I don't know if you guys want me to release the names.
Well, it's not, commissioners, the only thing you did was collect the polling. As far as releasing people's names, that's probably a legal question.
Right.
On that, or that we sort of accidentally got involved, so it sort of.
Even though there was 60% of those who voted or who submitted their ballot in favor, that expressed that they did not want the sale to the state to go forward, I'm going to contact the originator of this ballot and tell him as one commissioner, I'm not going to consider that. Now, the numbers, Melanie can share those against you, Sharon was already 97 to 67 was to vote in opposition. But I'll just let Jalen know as one commissioner, there's too much controversy over this, there's too much confusion over this.
How it was, how it was done, the fact that they were put into the P O boxes without post-heat, that's illegal. And the fact that the ballot box was, was just a cardboard box. Anytime a store owner went out to pump gas, anybody'd go in there and fool around with them. It wasn't secure.
Well, and Carol, let's, so we can get past that, I believe, as a board.
And the fact, and the fact that not everybody was contacted, even given the ballot.
I think we can all agree as a board on that and we can get past that and we can just, Melanie can hold on to those and give them back to the person who originally did it or whatever. We can talk about the numbers, but they're meaningless too, as far as I'm concerned. I will contact Jalen as one commissioner and say, you know, unfortunately, Jalen, this isn't going to have any bearing on, on how as a board, we look at our support or non-support for the Edmonds property being sold to the state. But as an individual commissioner, I'll probably be at that meeting or I will send a letter to the commission.
In October.
In October, yeah. I just.
I hope you are there.
As I told you, I do plan on attending unless it be the right hit my house.
You know, mentioned that I was the only one here. Everybody else had other pre-assigned positions and places to be from ODFW. And that's why I'm here representing myself.
Well, Commissioner Winters mentioned that. Quite honestly, I'm not surprised at all that no one was here personally.
Well, it's important.
I've talked to so many people about this and tried to explain where at least my role as a commissioner's been, which it's gotten blown way out of proportion.
Well, I appreciate you giving me this opportunity to express these words and our feelings and I'm sure there's no doubt of how important this is to me. And I just want to say thank you.
And I was amazed on the number of 230 youths every year. And you refer to them as disadvantaged youth.
Yes.
Can you, for the public who's watching on the camera, can you elaborate on what that disadvantaged youth and what is the program there that you get is down there to go?
Most of the children or youth come from several different organizations. The J Bar J Family Services Organization in Bend, Oregon, they have programs for boys, girls, high school kids that are just sort of in between, a little lost. And so that's one place a lot of these youth came from. Boys and Girls Club from Bend, Le Pine, Redmond, Terrebonne, they've all sent kids. Trillium Foster Homes, foster care out of Salem. There's another organization that I cannot remember the exact name, but they were out of Portland. And the Blazers set up and it was for black children who had, it was after school and they'd take them fishing and they would expose them to wilderness, wildlife and fishing and that. And they came down. And one of the local ranchers let them ride horses and they gave them a cutting expedition, exposition. And these kids were so excited because some of them had never been outside city limits. And we didn't used to charge the kids at all, but then finally it was getting so costly that we charged $5 a day if an organization brought the kids. If the youth were there, some days it was just a day trip and then we had the possibility of using donated funds to build a lodging facility that slept 12. And so these kids, instead of just doing day trips, they could come down and they could stay up to a week. And if they stayed three days, more than three days, then they had to do a constructive work project for the sanctuary to help, help do something. And then we would have people come to speak and we'd have fly fishing, experts come and teach them how to fly fish. It was just wonderful to see that these youth had a possibility and a chance to experience nature. And it was, so that's how it came to be.
Carol, you're touching on that so, I appreciate what you and your husband and Dan, during the conversation with the Fish and Wildlife, we asked, are you going to be able to continue something like that and how are you going to fund it? We know that there's monies available to purchase it. What is your plan? Are you going to be able to do this? And they said they want to. I would really, for me, it would make me feel much better if they say, this is our plan, this is what we're budgeting and we're going to be able to do this. But they want to is a different thing than why your guys' passion and why you did do. I'm not, I don't know if they will or not, but what you've guys have done, I guess is where I'm going. Thank you so much because the youth that benefit, I'm very much an outdoors person. Fishing and hunting is my life. And I think whenever we touch our youth, if they don't get those opportunities, we can change them. So you've changed a lot of people in your life and I hope that that can continue on.
And one of the aspects, as Commissioner Winters alluded to, is that the current ODFW, the agency itself, would like to, but they don't know. But that, what you described is a message that should go to the commission because the commission is the one that would set the priorities for the agency. So I think that's, now, another part, the kids from outside Lake County, so some people might say, well, what benefits that to the county? Then my mission, the year is to try to expose Lake County appreciation of to our people on the west side of the Cascades and others. And the only way to do that is for interaction, add a positive interaction. And I think that'd have a great benefit to the county in the long term than anything else we can do is mend that bridge between the urban and the rural. And what you're doing is, I stepped in that direction.
Some of these youths from Portland, they've never been outside the city limits. They had never been on a horse. They had never fished. They had never flown a kite. I mean, and these kids, you could just see in their happiness, they were just almost exploding. And so that's what it's all about, really.
What they see, what they touch and what they smell.
Thank you very, very much.
Yes, thanks, Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you for having me.
You bet.
Can I be to come tomorrow?
There's no decision to be made or any action to be taken by the board at this time. I'm still right where I said it from the start, but I think, like we said, you know, maybe it's not coming for the ODFW to look at some of the things or take before the commission.
But sometimes the board, the commission, let's say. But sometime before the commission, let's say October 11th, I believe.
Correct.
The Board of Commissioners need to have a discussion and position of yes or no, if they were, and if they're descending, or two to one, or whatever. But we need to have that discussion prior to that, so we can relate where the county is on this position. But we haven't set a date for that yet.
But it will be coming.
So I guess, what you're proposing is for a decision by the board, or, I'm, where I'm at individually is, I still stand, like I said, through the testimony of, to the commission, they'll find out if there's local support or not.
As a commission, I've heard two things. They want to know what the general populace is favorable, and want to know what the county commission position is. We haven't come up with a county position, is what I'm saying.
Well, I haven't talked, I haven't talked to anybody with the commission, but I haven't heard anybody other than the state Fish and Wildlife in Summer Lake, and the community, a number of community members that have asked us to write a letter of support, either opposing it, or in favor of it. I haven't heard the commission say anything, quite frankly. And so, I'll probably reach out to commission members if that's appropriate, and just let them know where I'm at, so.
So one period, we won't have a vote with the commission.
You won't.
I, I still...
The commission would like to know how the county officials favorable or not favorable. So we may just do that individually, this one period.
Yeah, well, they've been before us twice, and they, they even put the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife not the commission, and they've even put out one letter already. But the thing of it is, is, I guess I'd like to ask of them, is, if you're not comfortable with us saying, "We'll support what the community supports," the burden's upon them to find out what the community supports.
Well, that's, that's true on that part, yeah.
Yeah.
Two part.
Well, I certainly hope that you all vote in favor of ODFW buying Edmonds Wildlife Sanctuary.
There's mixed points, like you mentioned, it's more than just what the populace wants for my decision-making. It's private lands going to public lands, that's in the issue. It's water rights also, and, but it's private property, rights, your right to sell to who you wish, all those factors that go into that decision, and what I'll say to the commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You bet. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
I'll drive safe.
All right, so you've made it through our agenda.
And now we go eat lunch.
Yeah. There we go. Michael's probably the one who needs lunch.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carol.
About the vote, how should I, what's your answer on that?
The numbers, what the numbers are, it sounds like that the ballots, if you want to call them ballots, will be given to the person that done that, and it'll be their decision whether to release them. Is that what I sort of heard from...
Yeah, I think that the ballots don't have any, that whole thing isn't, speaking as one commissioner, isn't valid. It's not going to have any validity in how I weigh in as to how I feel about this, if the commission really wants to know how I feel about it. So, it's, it's not a point of any concern anymore.
To me, that, that poll or vote was not official by us, but at least not by me, and it has no credence.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Bye.
All right, so I see you have minutes on there, Melanie, during the work session, or, no, that's a regular session, that's for tomorrow. Don't mind, two different. There being nothing else to come before us, we will adjourn at five minutes to 12.
I took note, I have a family medical, thank you, Marissa, I'll be present.